God, our Creator of all there is and ever shall be, we ask you to shine your light down upon our city and our council. All of our residents, we ask you to protect our city and our country. We ask you to grant them the wisdom and the ability to make the highest decisions for the best good of our residents. For this, we are thankful. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Miss.
Mayor Dale Massett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terrence Rowe.
Here.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman William Ditmer.
Here.
Councilman Richard Gloom.
Here.
City Attorney James Mathews.
Here.
City Manager Vincent Lupo.
Here.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. I want to hit on three topics tonight. First, some of you have only today have received the 14-page packet that I left in each of your mailboxes on July 16th. I'll give you all two weeks to look it over before I ask any questions pertaining to it. Secondly, those of you that read this past Sunday's paper know that the FBI is investigating a city in Florida. The city is suspected of spending CRA, Community Redevelopment Agency, money on projects that do nothing to eliminate blight and slums in the community. The spirit and intent of the CRA Act was to provide funds to communities to obliterate blight and slums. I didn't think, and I still don't think, that spending CRA money on a fence around the dredge material site or on dredging is legal. And third, I would like to file a complaint about a fence that was erected by the city of Port Ritchie recently. The city erected a hideous three-section fence at Lake Cox at the end of Candlelight Court. Starting at the lake and running inland on city property, the first two sections look very unprofessional. They lean heavily to the north and don't appear to be sturdy. The third section from the lake is crooked. It leans to the east. It is this third section that has on it a no trespassing sign that violates city code. City code will not allow a no trespassing sign to exceed two feet square. This sign is more than four feet square. Code enforcement should see to it that this eyesore is removed. Consideration should be given to the homeowners at the end of Candlelight Court that look out their picture windows at this ugly fence. It is true that once in the past 35 years, an approximately 12-year-old boy trespassed on this property to retrieve a stuffed fishing lure. I doubt that this was the justification for putting up this flimsy fence. Please restore the natural beauty of the Candlelight subdivision and remove the unwarrantable fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Lord.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council, I pastor at 8114 Leo Kidd Avenue. Just want to share some dates of blessing and hope. First of all, tomorrow at 6 o'clock over at the Greek Orthodox Church on Little Road where they have the carnival, we'll be stuffing about 1,000 backpacks to give out in this area, help the community. So be honored if any of you could come. Going to be eating about six and doing some music and stuffing backpacks. So that's the first date. Then Saturday, there's some out on Fran's desk, but our back-to-school bash with our barbecue for backpacks. So we should have about 400 backpacks on site there with the water slide, bounce houses, and all. And I really want to thank those that have helped. Be all thankful for your gift to backpacks and business community. And if you still want to help, I think we sent a check for about $2,800 from the church. So if any would like to help do that, that would be great in buying them. They're about right at $10 apiece. So that's Wednesday and Saturday. And by the way, registration will start at 9:00, it's pre-registration, and I have the flyers out here so you can take care of that. Also, some exciting things, and I think history's being set. The Favor is going to hit theaters the 7th of September. The Favor about Luke Menard out in California hit a tree, broke his neck, back, crushed his skull. They said it was impossible for him to live. Well out of it, the Lord gave him a revelation of God's love, and so there'll be a movie hitting the theaters. We'll know by the end of the week if it'll be here. So there's posters, and just want to invite you out to that. And also, we're going to be having a group dealing with addiction will be with us, and I'll announce this later, going to be September 16th, Loving Hands Ministry. So you see on TV, there's a lot of addiction problems. You know, we've got caught trading God's peace for, you know, maybe a pill or a drink or something. So they really got some testimony. So those are some things of hope. This Wednesday at 6:00 at the Greek Orthodox over 8114. Saturday, 10:00 starts, September 16th, over to Fellowship Hall. So thank you all so much for all your help and being a blessing in the city. And remember, when it prophesied about Jesus, Abraham's son, it said that he would be a blessing to all nations, and it said, "Whatin exceeds as many but is one in Christ." So Lord bless you and thank you.
Reverend?
Yes, sir.
I always give you a couple of backpacks.
Well, good. That's great, Mayor. We appreciate it. Every bit helps.
That's right. You make a couple of kids happy, I'll be happy.
All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thanks again.
We've got Tom Malonis.
Hello. My name is Tom Malonis. I live at 7460 Candlelight Court. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Brown's. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for hearing me and everyone else in the council. I think we've met in the cul-de-sac there, and I can't speak as eloquently or as directly as Mr. Brown does as far as the directions of the fence. But I've lived in the neighborhood for about five years. When I bought my house, there was a large stockade fence there, pre-existing to my purchasing, and it blocked my view of the lake, but it predisposed my purchasing the house. So there's not much I could say. In the infinite wisdom of whatever the problem is, and I don't see the problem, I've lived there, we haven't called the police, we haven't seen trespassers, but there was an issue with a fishing area, okay? What do they call it? The easement.
Right.
So to control the easement, well, first off, they put up a stockade fence, which I didn't really mind further block the lake, but a horse fence was put up. So now you've got a large blockade fence blocking the view. Now there's a stockade fence, which looks like it should be a corral fence, which is kind of dirty and ugly. And then we put an easement, and someone came up with the idea to put in a green chain link fence to go off into the lake. Now after that, I see now there's a large six-by-six square chain link fence with a very large no trespassing sign, which attached to that are two pieces of kind of broken-down four-by-four rounded area chain link fence, and it just looks like I live next to Sanford and Son. It's a nice neighborhood. I enjoy living there. There's no crime. I did call the Assistant City Manager. I was told that's what the deal was, and that's what I have to live with. But when I sit at my dining room table, and I'm a family man, I have children, big family, I take care of my dad, when I look out my dining room window, I'm looking directly across like I am at you, and I see the succession of broken-down, misfitted, put-together fences and a big no trespassing sign, I want to have people over. They say, "What kind of neighborhood is this?" And I say, "It's a great neighborhood. It's safe, it's clean." But it just looks like it was poor planning, and Mr. Brown called it hideous. It is hideous. I believe it detracts from my property value, and I just wish that someone would go and take a realistic look at this, okay? Like I said, the one big fence was there prior to me moving in. The rest were successively put in. It looks like a bad Lego design, and it's just, again, it's ugly.
I got it.
It detracts. I believe it detracts from my property value.
I have not seen the fence in its latest version, but I do believe we could make that more aesthetic.
Defense will be repaired within the next two days, sir.
That would certainly appease me and make me very happy. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you hearing me out.
And you speak very eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Eckerman.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Janet Eckerman. I live on the west side of Quist on Miller's Bayou, and I want to start out by saying that I have volunteered for the city to serve as a community advisory on the community advisory committee. So this is a good time for me to say hi. But there is a reason for my being here, and that reason is Waterfront Park. We have for years walked our dogs to Waterfront Park along with multiple other community members who also walk their dogs to Waterfront Park, and we'd like to very much see a dog park built there. We know that there is a small dark dog park at the police station, but really is set up for small dogs. We have two large standard poodles, and every one that we see coming and going to Waterfront as we walk our dogs, and there are a lot of people, have large dogs.
Ma'am, may I stop you there for a second?
Sure.
We tried to do that, and I let Mr. Lupo and I had a dog park all planned out, and...
Ma'am, we attempted to do that approximately a year ago.
Really?
Yes, ma'am. And we went as far as staking out the property for a dog park. Someone took it upon themselves, they felt that dog park didn't belong there, they contacted the FCT and complained about the ecological... Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have a problem.
That's okay.
Ecological disaster with respect to animals running around the park, dangerous for the children, impact on the environment. To make a long story short, the FCT felt that it was inappropriate to have a dog park at that location.
A fenced dog park?
Yes, ma'am.
Really?
Consequently, I went to city council, and city council allowed me to build the dog enjoyment center that you see right next door.
Right.
So from that perspective, we cannot have a fenced-in dog enjoyment center at that park.
However, I think the council probably would join me. These government agencies graduate their neophytes quite often, and I bet you if we put another one in, another...
Request.
Request in, we might could get it. And since you've done that, I've always wanted it there, he's wanted it there, I don't know how the council feels.
The northeast corner of the Waterfront Park would be a perfect place. No one is ever there.
That's where it was.
The issue was not the specific location, but the fact that the animals themselves caused a problem in the FCT's view. I'll be more than happy to contact the FCT and to see if there is a possibility to change their mind.
Okay. I would appreciate it.
Certainly, ma'am.
I'm sure there are a lot of community members that would also appreciate it.
Certainly. If you will recall, I've been out there before all of this occurred handing out dog biscuits for some of the dogs properly.
Do you?
Yes, ma'am. At any rate, I will attempt to contact the FCT and to see if they can in fact see their way too, because as the mayor stated there, there is changing leadership in that organization. However...
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes. However, very often, what has been promulgated in an earlier day can be picked up and moved forward.
I see.
But I will make that attempt and report back to council.
Vincent Lupo. Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Sandra Spolli, Reverend.
I'm going to give you my opinion now before the meeting gets hot and heavy, and this is my opinion. Take from it what you want, and I know you guys are not going to take too much from it, but I feel very shameful that this council did not hear the people and create... What word do I want to say? A uniform amount of people to work on the code and work on it with each other, with the residents, and come back to council with it. You know, you guys asked for people to come, they came. Why can we not have a committee put... That's the word I was looking for, was committee. Thanks for your help, everybody. A committee to work on this, to satisfy everybody. The code is going to go through, we know that, but maybe some changes and some bendability will help. And I'm talking now because I don't want to get into it hot and heavy later on. Take from it what you will, but think about it. You want the people's input. You talk about people not coming to the meetings, but what do you do? You shun what they have to say. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that is all. Anyone else from the... Matt?
8301 Congress, Matthew Todd. I was wanting to kind of see if you guys can answer a question for me. There were some residents that wanted to know, on the previous council and a previous city manager that used to sit up here, quite a few of the residents weren't aware of what the city was spending before we had got the pleasure of having Mr. Lupo as our city manager on the water aspects. People weren't aware that it was costing the city $1.9 million, and then what Mr. Lupo and this council and our city attorney, which I cannot thank the council enough, I'm sorry, I disagree with the previous comments from the person that came up here. I think you're doing an outstanding job, but I think you need to be a little more transparent about what kind of money you save these people with the water and what direction you went and how it impacted us to that aspect. And I really appreciate that, and again, I think you're doing an outstanding job, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Phyllis, welcome.
Phyllis Gray, 8141 Aquila in San Pebble. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lupo, Council. It has been a while. You're absolutely right. I come here tonight because there's a lot of negativity in the paper. Port Ritchie, you know, gives all the fodder to the Pasco Times, and it's been ongoing. And so, just for those people who do not know, the mayor and I go back a very long way, 1997 to be exact, and there was a lot of problems, a lot of press, all negative, nothing ever, ever good. And so, I just wanted to come tonight to tell the people who don't really know our mayor. I do, and I'm happy that I do, and I consider him my friend. A few weeks ago, I lost my husband, someone that Alister certainly knew everybody, been to Dr. Dale's house, and felt that this was his city. And I think that he had no choice. He was married to me. So when I lost him quite suddenly and with no explanation at all, I first want to say thank you to the city and to the EMS workers that came to my condo at 5:00 in the morning on a Friday. They took care of Alister and did what they could do, and we got downstairs and they put him in the EMS wagon. And one of the men, one of our citymen, city workers, came over to me and knew me, and he put his arms around me and asked if I was going to make it. And he looked deep into my eyes, and I promised him that I would. And then, as it turned out, Alister was called to God, and it has not been easy these past weeks. But through all the tears and all the sorrow and all the questions that have no answers, I got an email from our mayor. And Dr. Dale, if you don't mind, I really do want to read it. I know it was sent to me, but I do want to share it with everyone because I want them to know you as a person outside of city council, outside of the printed paper in the Pasco Times. I want them to know who you are, as I do. And Dr. Dale wrote this to me. He said, "Phyllis, in all my years, I have never found adequate words of consolation because there are none. Your faith will sustain you. Alister was and is one of the most enjoyable, dignified gentlemen I have ever known. He was always happy, and it was infectious. He made those around him better, which is a signature of a leader. Although he wasn't the public face, he went through our trials with us and made us better. He was truly the wind beneath your wings. I will miss him immensely." And then he wrote this poem that he found and he wanted to share, and it says, "Across the years, I will walk with you in deep green forests, on shores of sand, and when our time on earth is through, in heaven too, you will have my hand." This is the man that I am proud to call my mayor, and I am proud to call my friend.
Thank you, Phyllis. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
God bless you.
If it pleases, if it pleases, Mayor and Council, item number two, discussion on Avila Bay project. And please pardon, afraid I'm losing my voice. If I could ask our city attorney to pick up and move on with it.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You're done?
This is a discussion on Avila Bay project.
Oh, you're going to take it now?
No, he just wants me to take it later. He's not feeling well. He's got a real bad throat, so...
As far as, I have no real reports for council, other than to simply state, the city is moving in a positive direction. Our initial budget approach and analysis is going to be rather an eye-opener for this council and I hope for the citizens. And I can assure you that, given the direction we're moving in, it will be a positive direction that I'm sure almost every one of us will appreciate at another time.
Okay. Bring it to council. Comments?
I just wanted to extend our sincere sympathies to Phyllis. I was shocked when I heard, unfortunately, I heard after the fact that, so you had our prayers and our thoughts with you, and I think the mayor said it probably better than any of us could. He was a class act, and he will be missed.
I have an announcement. Can I make an announcement?
Please.
I'm pleased to announce that on July 11th, just regarding the red light cameras, last time I spoke of this, the Supreme Court, you know, held an hour favor, at least regarding, you know, the city's favor as well as all the other cities and counties regarding the red light cameras. On July 11th, the case that we're involved in, which City of Port Ritchie has defended along with numerous other cities, it was dismissed by the federal court, Southern District. So that case has been dismissed. The peers from the council that's representing us, from the notes they've sent me, which rightfully I can't read because it's legal work product, but we highly doubt it'll be appealed in any way. They have 60 days to do that, so July, August, September 11th, it's a done deal. We won the case, okay? That doesn't mean the state legislature won't change it. I haven't heard anything yet, whether it'll be on their docket for the springtime or not, I don't know, but right now it looks like it's a closed matter, so that outstanding potential liability, we can pretty much not worry about, and I doubt if they'll appeal this ruling.
Jim, all right, if no one else has anything, I want to thank Phyllis, the highest honor I've ever been paid, and I appreciate it so much. Can't miss Alister as much as you do, but I sure miss him. Thank you so much. And while I'm being emotional, my granddaughter is five yesterday. Tally, happy birthday, honey. You're the best old soul I've ever met, and you're only five. Okay. Now we'll get back to normal things. Dog park, I think we should push forward. Terry, you know some of those people at the FCT?
I knew some of them. They haven't changed.
And maybe we'll just counsel, fence, and...
I'll get with the FCT.
If you don't like the answer, just ask again.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to say is, I'd like to thank the people who did volunteer for our boards and committees. I understand that letters have gone out to the people who are sitting on them now to find out they will continue to be on these boards, and just thank you people for volunteering to do that.
Everybody got it? Well, we're going to get out of here fast. One of the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Go ahead. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion to approve, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. First is Avila Bay, which Mr... This is going to be the Mr. Matthews.
Yeah, right. If you go to tab one and move two pages, you'll see the beginning of agenda, item number two. You'll see it there. Discussion on the Avila Bay project. Mr. Hobby, you could come up while I'm doing this. Do you mind?
Sure.
This is Clark Hobby, represents the builder. He's got, can you introduce, why don't you introduce your, who you have here, Clark?
Sure, sure. Again, Clark Hobby for the record, Hobby and Hobby PA, 5709 Tottle Wave Drive, Newport Ritchie. I have with me Parker Hirons, who's with Lennar, who are on this side, and then I have Brad Cole, who's our engineer of record, and they can answer any questions that you may have if I can't answer.
Super. This is a little complicated, so just bear with me on the legal part of this, but what I'm looking for, and what the city's looking for, is a motion to approve this water and wastewater agreement, as well as a revised plat plan and final construction agreement. What had happened was, if you look at the next document, you'll see in 2004, a PUD was approved for Avila Bay for 120 units, I believe it was 120. And so that was done under our old code. Our code that you look at now wanted to affect 2005, but the PUD was approved. Subsequent to that, all the infrastructure was put in, the roads are out there, the pipes are out there, everything else legally was done except building the buildings. And then if you look at the next document, which is ordinance number 06 in 2006, two years later, you'll see that ordinance, which was approved by the city council, approving the final plat plan and accepting the public easements and other dedications in the plat. If in my last meeting, I have somewhat of a feel of what a plat plan is, but in any event, there's certain, you know, we have easements over there, certain dedications of roads and things like that have all been done. So the only thing that wasn't done was the actual erection of the buildings, and then the market kind of fell apart. I presume that's why.
That's right.
I want to speak for Avila Bay. But in any event, that was all done, so all the legal stuff, so the PUD wasn't just started. Under our new rules, you have to finish a PUD and so much... Under our new rules, you have to finish a PUD in so much time, but it was over. So the plat plan was done, parcels are out there, being taxed, et cetera. What happened was, since when Avila Bay was coming on the first time, what we do, you may not know this, but when larger developments come on to our water system, we negotiate the actual impact to the system. In other words, we say, "Look, it's gonna cost us this much money to fix, you know, our system so you can get on it. This is in addition to any impact fee." So if you look behind this, you're gonna see complicated amendment to a water and wastewater development agreement. What happened was, is the early agreement was there, the work wasn't done because the development stopped. So when they came back here this time, there was some minor changes, but we changed a little bit in the amount of people we have on our water system, things like that. So after several months of negotiation and with Avila Bay, we've been very cooperative, they're gonna make improvements to our water and wastewater system. And I'll, Chris isn't here, huh? Ms. Muse, maybe you can explain better when we get to that. But they're gonna do some work on, matter of fact, your people could probably explain it. They're gonna spend a lot of money on our Bay Boulevard lift station, okay? Which we're very happy about. And this amendment is nothing more than reflecting a page of construction agreement on, which we've gone over with our engineer and Mr. Muse and Mr. Muse. I forget, it's page 9B, I believe, which is gonna be done a lot of work. In addition to that, instead of 120 units, they're reducing the units. The footprints aren't changing. They're large, they're gonna be townhouses. So the big buildings and then they split them into townhouses. They're gonna reduce it from 100 down to 110, and correct me if that number's not right. And in addition to that, there'll be some slight construction changes. But the site plans have already been approved, the preliminary site. It's already gone through planning and zoning and all of that, so I'm looking for an approval of those things. But pretty much we're here because I definitely need approval of this contract for the mayor to sign, as well as the revised plat plan. Did I get that all right, Ms. Hobby?
I think that's about it. So again, the project was approved back in the mid 2000s. It went through a lot of approvals, was even platted and Lennar built a lot of improvements internally, dedicated those to the city, but then the market blew up. And so they didn't go vertical with that stuff. And so what we've been working with staff is just to making sure there were a few things on the wastewater improvements we needed to change for the benefit of the city. We've got a better design now. So all we're doing now is there's a minor tweak on the plat. And we're changing the wastewater agreement to address the changes in the lift station. And then we're also asking council to approve the construction plans, even though staff technically has already approved them. We thought it would be a good idea to bring it to council, just to make sure that council signed off.
Yeah.
Other than that, we can answer any questions.
Just, just after that, building department has authority on minor changes to do it, but we just brought it all here for the...
Thought we'd better to bring it all to council. So we're happy to answer any questions.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
How far to the north of you is the State Park?
You guys know from the founder?
I know I can get a golf ball there. You guys gotta know that.
Trying, I'm trying to get him to give a ballpark. Parker, do you know? I mean, is it 100 George?
That I don't know. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, that's the name of the park. I thought, surely you have a map that shows your property.
He does, but I mean, I think it's probably, I'm guessing it's only like 100, 200 feet would be my guess. It's at the end of the...
The property lines are contiguous.
Yeah, I think they border, right?
They're contiguous. That's, that's what I wanted to know. And my, there's a reason for this. At some point, and Mr. Lupo doesn't want me to be bothered with this, we can discharge the north end of the city out if Walmart would agree
Right.
to 19. If we could put a road through there, and I don't know how the legals would work, that would be up to Jim. But it would certainly be more fair and more safe for the city if we could ask them. And so I'm giving you that task.
Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate that.
So if you're right at that, then does the land then just end at Walmart?
That's right. It pretty much ends right there.
Okay.
That's the entrance.
Okay, and, and the road that Walmart has behind it, does it, is there still some land further?
No, sir.
East?
No. The State Park goes all the way out to 19. That property line goes all the way out, Walmart, the butts. Walmart, the butts, night, the State Park and this property.
Okay, there's no way we could talk to the State Park?
Wow, you can talk to the State Park.
I would, I'd be that as a real long shot, given how...
Well, if you throw in one, we can throw in one.
That's their property. I'm not sure I have to say it with the question.
Well, I mean, if it came off of their property and we wanted to go, if the State Park would trade us some property for...
What does their property have to do with it?
That was gonna come through their property, I assume, if my imagination's...
We wouldn't be able to do that because we're already platted.
This is, this is Bay Boulevard, you know? But I don't want you to do this. This is Bay, this is Walmart. So what are you talking about? They got a building all the way here. This is their property.
In all due respect, we've had this conversation several different times.
We've had this conversation before. He didn't give me the right answer, so I'm asking in a way.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, so there's nothing from here.
Nothing finished yet.
Okay, never mind.
Okay. I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate it.
Leave no stone unturned. Anything else from the council?
No, that's, that is my main concern. I have a large number of citizens in the north end there that are very concerned about traffic. And adding 100 and some units is going to definitely impact us heavily. And some of the solutions that have been presented are not favorable to them.
Right.
I've talked with the county myself about trying to maybe see if we could exit you out to the road along Walmart easement there. I've been told that this is a monumental task
Right.
by the city, but the county tells me that's not, not quite true. And they do this on a regular basis. So I would like to work with you, as well as this council would, to see if there isn't another solution for an exit. We welcome you here. We think you're a great addition. I wasn't too happy when all the trees got chopped down, but that's progress and I can't stop it.
Right.
But we are very concerned about the traffic flow and congestion. And I'm, I'm gonna be somewhat critical until we can solve that one problem.
Right. I appreciate it. Just the only thing I would point out for the record is, so the project's already platted. So we're entitled to build a number of units on the existing plat. And this is actually a net reduction by about 10, I think it's 10 or 12 units from the existing platted approval. So for the neighbors, it's actually a net benefit compared to where the entitlements and approvals stand right here today. But, you know, I, I would hope that, yeah, it sounds like the city has some larger issues on the interconnections. And, and I talked with the, with the mayor and, and staff, and I understand you all are working on it, maybe some improvements out of Bay Boulevard, make things flow better, and we're fully supportive of that.
Anyone else?
I'm just getting on, Terry? Well, Terry and I feel the same way. And if, if there's any way we can talk to Walmart, we'd like to do that. With your support, maybe something could happen that's better for the people on the north.
Right. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Can I make a suggestion? I know this sounds really silly, but the name of one of your streets is Candida Drive. Do you know that it, that's a yeast infection?
I did not know that.
Thank you.
It's a yeast. Yeah, that's right.
That's funny.
They've already been dedicated. It's already been dedicated to the city.
I'm just thinking something you might think about.
As long as the other one's not myco-statin or Orinistatin Drive.
No, they were. There was none of that.
I never saw Candida.
I just found that kind of like amusing.
Who chose the names?
Clark, they're our streets, right?
Right.
We could change the name of the streets.
Well, can we find something else?
But don't, don't do it now. They're gonna sell buildings with this stuff.
Let this approve. Let my project get built and you guys can change the name.
Wait till it's built.
Jim, do we need a motion?
We're not calling a massive way. You ready?
I disagree.
It just seems like it would be not a selling point.
Yeah, you need a motion.
Just say a motion.
A motion to pass is part of our agenda.
Let me go back to this. Motion to approve the Avila Bay upgrade project.
Second.
Wait sort of green, right, plant a fire.
Anyone in the public want to speak to this? That, none being said. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
No.
I think Mr. Rogen.
Who's second?
Motion second.
Parker, start building, please. Item number three.
Maybe we should have a floor rock so we could put it on the... All right, Mr. Matthews.
Go ahead. Agenda item number three?
Yes, sir.
Is the first reading ordinance 18663 by title only. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Port Ritchie, Florida, amending chapter 14 of the Port Ritchie code by adding a new article six entitled Minimum Standards for Residential Dwellings, providing for penalties and fines, severability, and effective date. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
First reading.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Yes, I have. You guys complain because I don't talk very much, well, you're gonna be in for it now. Okay, I must apologize for standing my, for not standing my ground with the people and understanding the impact of the housing code standards that would have on the people of Port Ritchie. The reality in America is that everyday laws, statutes, and regulations are passed by a federal government, 50 state governments, and millions of city governments that the people are never aware of until they get caught breaking them. That is because the people have voted into office, people that they believe have their best interest at heart. Years of voter apathy have led us to where we are now in the federal, state, and city governments. Now we're experiencing fears, doubts, discovery of unscrupulous deals, payoffs, and harassment of individual systems through the abuse of power. I have talked with some residents who have had, have experienced highly stressful and even targeted behavior in the past by our city government. This was deplorable behavior by the persons that the people trusted. The council and staff have from the beginning pushed for level playing fields, fair application of the law, and sensitivity to the needs of the people. We cannot take the taste of past bad practices out of the minds of people overnight and probably not over a couple of years. But with communication and fair enforcement of the law over time, we may be able to change your perceptions. If not, it is your legal right to vote to replace those who have failed you. But you, the people, made drastic changes within the last three elections. When I took office in 2016, I discovered years of neglect to our infrastructure and outdated policies. Where do you begin to fix all of the problems and the issues that affect approximately 2,000 people in this city? How do you do the right thing for as many as possible and assist those in need? In two years, we've cleaned the parks, added equipment to the parks, continued to work diligently to reduce spending and dependence on the CRA, kept taxes as low as possible, reduced dependency on water and kept water rates steady, repaired a pier, began work with the county towards a high combined trail, held their taxes steady, started the dredging process, and created a loving playing, a level playing field according to law. We're working for you and there is more to do. I watched the workshop for a minute, for minimum housing standards three times and have discovered that we're dealing with two very distinct things. First, the need for a law that establishes basic guidelines for housing maintenance and control of blight. I spent the week reading our codes by using key words to search for codes that pertain to our housing standards. I found there is no one place to comprehensively read what is acceptable or not acceptable in our housing codes. This minimum housing standard will provide rules that will allow our code enforcement to have easily readable reference for violations. Throughout our code, are snippets of rules and regulations that are not easily found to read or to understand what is expected for the housing in this city. At this time, our code officers are using our vague code, county codes, and state codes to perform their jobs. This code provides clarification for our enforcers and our citizens. It will provide clear parameters for the performance and assessment when dealing with blight in this city. For the first time, citizens will have very basic, and I want to emphasize the word basic, rules they can clearly read and understand what they're being cited for. And if they choose, understand what is needed before they invest their money and time. Wouldn't it be nice to use the building code as a resource to home projects and maintenance, rather than viewing them as an obstacle to be feared or dealt with? Laws have to be specific enough for, to allow interpretation that allows for human behavior and understanding. And that calls for the expertise of lawyers. The second thing I found was an underlying fear of the abuse of power that residents have experienced in the past. If this ordinance passes, I want to assure everyone that if any, at any time that they feel that they have been harassed, abused, or targeted, I want to know about it. These behaviors have nothing to do with the law, but with the conduct of our city officials and staff. No one should be disrespected by anyone. This council will not stand for that behavior. I am proud of the input that our citizens have done in their own research in the neighborhood meetings. I read every one of the handouts many times and listened to what the people have to say. There was a genuine and deliberate effort to discuss among yourselves the meaning and the impact of this ordinance. That is proof that people can have meaningful civilized input into their government. I hope that in the future, citizens will continue to express their needs, participate in conversations that will create a city to be proud of. We have not ignored you, but we have failed to provide a port platform that allows us and you, the citizens, to reach understanding. I hope to encourage this council to seek input from the residents in the future with the use of workshops and deliberate conversation. Everyone deserves to live in an environment that promotes safety, health, cleanliness, and security. Everyone has the freedom to choose their own lifestyle, provided they do not encroach on the rights of others to do the same. This ordinance is a small step in improving our city and the pride its citizens can have in it. I personally support this code, but I represent the people, not myself. And I will change my vote to no because we have failed to fully explain or communicate with our people. Thank you for listening.
Well said. Not that I agree.
I didn't ask you to.
I didn't know this was adversarial.
It wasn't.
Okay. I think that we made clear that anything in this code that was abused, was not well said, or was misinterpreted by our code, we would rewrite. And that's how I feel about it. I do appreciate what you said, Ms. Soro. Any other comments?
We've, we've talked this to death already. And we've heard the people. They may not have thought we listened, but it was quite evident from the last meeting that we did because we could almost quote them. And I agree, their concerns do not go by us without due diligence and concern on our parts. But we need this. We need this badly. And it's very, very basic. And I know there was some disgruntled people that did not believe me when I said it at that workshop that, and I'll say it again, I would not do this to myself, to my neighbors, to my citizens, and my friends if I did not believe this was the right thing to do. Like I said, they're basic. We have to have some kind of tools to give our code enforcement. And I have said it before, I have lunch every day with code. They have lunch the same time I do. I hear their discussions. I hear their problems. I hear about every call that comes into that office. And I tell you, this is not going to be a problem. And if it is, we're, as you said, going to... And if it is, we're, as you said, going to address it, fix it.
I have a brief comment. I too listen to the folks here that came for that workshop. We have over six hundred voters, at least in this last election. I think maybe there were fifteen, maximum twenty disconcerted people. Where were the other five hundred and eighty people? If that was such a major issue, they weren't here to voice their disconcertiveness. So I think, and it's obvious, that the overwhelming population of this city realizes the benefit that minimum housing standards will bring to this city. The, the increase in property values, uh, the best, the best interest of those people and the safety is overwhelming. And I made that motion to approve our first reading. Mr. Mayor, it's in your lap.
Well, no, I'd like to make a comment as well.
Please.
It's, it's, earlier Jenny and I both had voted no, and our no was basically based on not having a workshop prior to proceeding with the ordinance. We did listen to everybody who came in, we did stop the ordinance, we did listen, and we understand everybody's concern, but again, I also agree with Mr. Bloom that only a small percentage that showed up, actually several of those were voiced opinion for the ordinance and wanted to add stipulations to that ordinance. So I think anybody who says we didn't listen, that's really not true. And the other thing I would like to say is, we could be probably a little more sensitive in the future to workshops. I know the mayor thinks they're sometimes a waste of time and people don't show up. If they don't show up, then they voice their opinion by not showing up. So, uh, will we proceed? I, I vote yea.
Okay. Everybody, I'm just, one last statement. When I left this building, all of the naysayers, two, I don't, I don't remember one that wasn't satisfied that we had listened and we'd listened to their concerns and addressed them, and we will in the future. So, um, let's call the vote.
You have to put it to the public.
Public, want to speak? I know you do.
Eighty-three oh one, Congress, Matthew Todd. I hope you guys go through with it. We need to clean up some of the pigsty areas, we need to keep our property values up, and for the ones that don't want to clean up, um, that's not fair to the ones that want their homes clean. Let's have a city that we're all proud of, and we all need to work together instead of making little transactions on their side to basically disrupt the city, is what it is. The city needs to come together to keep our property values up, and I believe you guys are on the right path. Thank you for letting me speak.
Anyone else? Going back to council. I have a motion, I have a second. You want a roll call vote, or?
Whatever you want.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
Could wait for her to call your name? Mayor John Masson?
I'm last.
You're last. William Dittmer?
I'll go next.
Jenny Sorrell?
Nay.
Terrence Sorrell?
Yea.
Richard Bloom?
Yea.
Mayor Masson?
I don't count, yea. Thank you all, thank the public, and I don't think there'll be any problems. But it was the reason that I wanted to talk with the code enforcements and bill, so we have kind enforcement, and, and that's all that really there is. Let's be back to the Mr. Matthews show.
Okay, gen item number four. This is the second and final reading of ordinance number eighteen dash six six two. And ordinance of the city council of the city of Port Ritchie, state of Florida, amending the city code of ordinances, chapter twenty, Parks and Recreation, Article One in general, section twenty dash one C, amending Article Three, old, both, there's Park, section twenty dash sixty-three C, miscellaneous prohibitions, amending Article Four, mixed parks, section twenty dash ninety-six C, miscellaneous prohibitions, and providing for separability included in code and effective date, that's by title only, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance eighteen six six two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would the public like to speak to this? Back to the council, all in favor?
Hang on, I have, I just would like to make a, an inquiry here. In this ordinance, um, not that I'm a big drinker, but subsection one, it says that no person shall have brought alcoholic beverages into, nor shall any person drink alcohol beverages at any time in the park. Is that this park, all parks?
I, I can answer that. Well, first of all, we're not changing that portion, the, we're amending an ordinance here. What you're voting on is the portions of the ordinance that are stricken through and the ones that are underlined, okay? So you see, see domestic animals?
Strike, strike my comment then.
Okay. But I can, I can also answer your, I can also answer your question. The answer is, there's no drinking in our parks, any parks.
How, just a quick question, how, how would that affect if we were ever to have permission to have beer or something in Waterfront Park for an event?
We have to change, we have, speaking about that collateral from this, okay? You have to change the ordinance, yeah? Yeah. I mean, if you, if you were asked me, would it be a violation to do it one time with a special permit or something, I'd have to do a little homework on that. But you want drinking in the parks, we have to change the ordinance for sure. But notwithstanding perhaps, under the FCT on waterfront may be an issue.
Right.
But I don't think it is alcohol's an issue there, right? No.
No issue with FCT.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I think they allowed your...
While we're discussing parks real quick, I don't know, we were always talking about trying to find things to do in Waterfront Park that FCT will allow. This past weekend, I'm not sure what night it was, my wife and I or some friends were downtown Newport Ritchie, and they actually had movies in the park, which was a kid movie.
It's under discussion right now.
I was just gonna say, I, that seems like it would be an easy one to get done.
May I comment?
Please.
So Will, um, Jocelyn and myself today had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation folks over at, in Newport Ritchie about events that we possibly could move forward with, and one of the events that she recommended giving where we are was exactly that.
It seemed like an easy one.
Was a, a, a movie in the park. And it would be, we were discussing this at length, and we thought that that would be a great introduction to start with, with Waterfront Park, and...
I agree.
So we, we're moving in, in that direction.
Well, we're on the same page.
Yes. And, and, and Jim, my concern with no alcoholic beverages is that if at some point in time in the future that we do set up something in Waterfront Park where there's an event, and we want to, say, have somebody in there to sell beer or what have you, then obviously based on this, we'd have to change the ordinance.
If you're gonna do it a regular basis, I would change it, yeah. There's no drinking in any of the parks, I could pull it out, I have it right here, but I'm pretty sure that's the case.
Is there ways to do temporary permit type of a thing for special events?
I, I can put anything you want in the ordinance, in other words...
So keep it no drink?
You can keep no drinking in the parks except by, you know, if council votes he has or a special event or something.
Except for any event.
Right.
Yeah. Makes a whole lot of sense.
Yeah.
When you talk to them, they sell anything with these movies, popcorn?
Yeah. Sometimes they, they were selling popcorn and candy and sodas and things because it was, it was for the children. And, and what my inquiry was at this point is, how many children are here in this city versus obviously Newport Ritchie, they're gonna have, you know, hundreds and hundreds of children, and, and so that's something we wanted to look into to see if, if that would be, you know, the appropriate type of event to have, or maybe, you know, a little, little older kind of movie.
It's close enough proximity to the two cities that you get to bleed over...
Yeah, from the other...
That's quite evident during Christmas.
It was, we'll just watch a scene this, this weekend.
And, and, and it seems like that also is another issue is because we need, they, they, we have, we need power, okay, to run. They had, they bought a projector with a, what was it, Jocelyn, seventy-eight, or no, it was a huge screen, I don't...
Twenty.
Twenty.
No, it was, it was, it was a monster screen they had, but they bought this because they, initially, they, they rented it. There were people that had this, 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 this equipment that you could use, and they saw that it was, it was so successful, and they were doing it so often, they, they went out and bought a rear projector and a screen. And, and so I don't know what the power structure or system is like over there, if there's any power to run a projector.
There is, but we'd have to make some modifications.
Yeah, or, or you could use a generator or something.
What did they, the volume wise, did they just blast it out?
It wasn't offensive at all. I mean, we were walking closer to Main Street, and it was in Sims Park, and it, you could tell that there was something going on, but it, I mean...
All those, all those are issues that we can easily handle.
I think that's a great idea. And you don't even have to get it in the trunk of the car to get in free.
It's funny you said that because they, they were talking about doing dri, remember the old drive-ins, if you're old enough to remember the old drive? They were talking about doing drive-ins over there too, so, anyway.
Okay, so we're, we're done as far as this issue.
You got to go up to the public comments.
Public? Yes?
Sandra Spool, the eighty-six twelve Green Street. Think it's a good idea to put in the allowance of selling liquor at special events with permit, being permitted, because there's a lot of events that through the years have come up, and that has come up. I don't know if you guys remember, but every time there's a, a special event, that's the first thing they ask about, so that's a good idea in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Before we vote, I just want to commend the police department. The reason I brought this to council in the first place was a complaint from several of our citizens that they were trying to walk their dog in the park even though they weren't supposed to at the time, but they had their dogs on leashes and that their dogs were being brutalized or scared or something, and it, it just made for a bad situation. And last weekend, I know the people that had their dogs running loose were back in the park, and I want to commend the police, especially Officer Cox, I understood he was the one that went out and told this woman she had to put her dogs on leashes, and it didn't go, she did not respond well, and he told her if she didn't, he would have to ask her to leave the park, and then later she came down to the corner of Bay and, and Old Post and berated him very loudly so that the neighbors could even hear it. But I commend him for taking action on this. I know this is the second reading tonight on this, so now it will become law, but it was something we needed, and kudos to the police for enforcing it and making sure that people enjoy their time in park.
Good job, Officer Cox. Any other comments? We all vote? You ready? Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, boy. And this one you don't have to either do, Jim. I've been instructed this... Go ahead.
Are we talking about... I would, I sincerely would appreciate it. I'll jump in.
Oh, that's low.
I'll jump in if you start swimming those.
That's quite all right. This is the contract with Pasco County Animal Control Services at seventeen thousand eight hundred and three dollars. This came up once before, I believe council wanted additional information concerning how much we use this, and, not to pick on you, Jocelyn, but this is some of the information. Can you go over the information, do you mind?
This is additional information that we got from the police department regarding calls in our service area for fiscal year seventeen.
This is from the chief, and didn't, didn't, oh, and the next page is, these are, is the information provided by Animal Control Services on the second page here, and a list of that. I don't know...
I requested information from animal services, and I also requested information from our police department, so we were able to generate two different lists of calls for service in that same time period.
Officer Cox, anything you want to say about it?
So the, the information from, that came through us, that was data that came from the Pasco Communication Center as far as calls for service that I believe were generated either from us or from the citizens directly to them within the city limits during that time span. And again, it was from September one sixteen through, I'm sorry, October one sixteen through September thirtieth of seventeen for twelve calendar months.
That's the only thing I could add to it, and I'm a little hesitant to say this, it would sound like I'm for it or whatever, but I can tell you, there's a state law that if a dog bites someone, there's a process. I know you've gone through this with the impoundment of the dog for purposes of rabies, and, and there's issues whether it bit someone before and it's gonna be put down, and there's hearings and everything else. If a dog bites a person, police have to impound the dog, okay? We have to take it somewhere, and you have to be ready to do that. I presume you've done that, Officer, right?
Yes, sir. Actually, we just had a case here, I want to say about four or five months back, curd out on, on Siesta Lane, just that it was a young child that was bit by a, by a pit bull that was at the, at the residence, and Animal Control did come out in that and subsequently took possession of the, of the animal and went through the quarantine process. There are some cases where, where the animal can be quarantined at the residence depending on the circumstances, but there are others where the animal must be, must be actually taken and secured.
Yeah, I know there's a process that we have to follow, so that's mandatory, so if you decide not to do this, you have to figure out how you're gonna do that, okay? That's about all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I have a question too, so...
Let me, as, we had twenty calls, is that the final vote?
If, you know, based on animal control, I realize we had this discussion a year ago, that three, four, six, six, eight area code, so some of it's unincorporated for Ritchie.
Correct.
Okay, so the current residents are paying their taxes outside the city limit, pays for animal control outside the city limit.
Correct.
We also, a city, we are also, aren't we double dipping, so to speak? Are we paying out of our funds and paying county taxes? Because I tried to look it up, and you really can't figure out how that's done.
No, not, not quite. There is a, a, all municipalities are charged by the county for this service. It is not a simple numbers game, seventeen or twenty calls divided by seventeen thousand dollars. There's a, a complete different economics attached to those twenty calls. I can tell you very candidly, our sister city Newport Ritchie went through this same discussion several years ago, where they rejected the county option, started their own operation. The expenses, the time loss, the personnel involvement are horrendous to the point where they went back to the county and, and reassigned themselves. If in fact we take over this function, I assure you that even in those short number of seventeen or twenty calls, it will, in man-hours, in potential costs...
One person's salary would more than eat that up.
Exactly. Exactly. You would have to take in a, 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 an animal that we confiscate to a veterinarian by law. The vet would have to treat him. We would have to pay for that animal. We would have to shelter that animal.
It's not actually my question, my question...
It's not actually my question. My question is, it seems like we're paying twice.
Could I respond to that question?
Yeah.
Please do that.
The county residents pay municipal tax service fee that our residents do not pay. Okay? I brought this up in math act, math, eighty years ago. Extremely complicated tax-wise, but best way, best way to explain it is, we have a police department, okay? So when we pay county taxes, some of those taxes go to the sheriff's office, but we have our own police department. So.
We get a discounted rate for that?
No, we don't get a discounted rate. We pay taxes. That's the big one, is police. And there's lawsuits once or twice a year challenging the municipal tax services fee personally. I, there was a time that I crunched the calculations for a while and I thought we were being overcharged and tried to get the other cities together to do it together. We go back two years backwards. So people in the county that don't live in a city pay an extra small tax. It's called a municipal tax servicing fee, okay? And what they do is, the county, I can only, I can explain it in terms of police, it's easier. They look at what it costs per sheriff, okay, per capita of people. So obviously, we don't have the economy of scale, so we pay X amount of dollars for our police. But if, for twenty-five-hundred residents at the county level, they pay less. They calculate that figure. And they calculate it on other things we have, like fire department and things like that. Then they use those calculations. They won't reveal what those calculations are for the public, you know, for county that's watching, although I've gone over there numerous years ago trying to figure out what that formula was. Okay, until you sue them, you're not going to see it. But they, that's what hap, that's how they get around the double taxation. You're not allowed to double tax. So now with that long explanation, I presume that Animal Control Services, okay, since that's something that they're paying for, okay, okay, we're not, we're not paying for this in our taxes, okay? And it's part of that calculation. That's what's giving them the right charges.
So city residents are not paying that portion to the county?
Yeah, that portion, yeah.
Correct.
That's right. That's probably why there isn't a double taxation because they.
Because that's what it seems like when I tried to look it up. It was like we're paying.
Oversimplified something actually extremely complex.
Okay.
What do you want to do? It's a different story.
We, obviously, I guess the chief took these and he figured out which ones. And there he goes. Oh, I'm sorry. And there he goes, three, four, six, six, eight. He did these, he pulled them out by knowing they're in our city.
Yes. Because basically. I don't know. At first I saw this about five minutes ago, so I can't really help.
Three, four, six, six, eight.
All these addresses fall in the city.
Right, that's what I'm saying. He had a gigantic list of all of three, four, six, six, eight. Would you like to talk? Yes, please. I want to see it. Can't wait. Anyway, so he has this giant list of three, four, six, six, eight. And then he went through and figured out which ones were really ours. And of all this list.
We already spent the seventeen thousand dollars just doing that.
Yeah, we spent it.
Correct.
I, I, the best, I, I kind of, when I, these are dog calls, right?
Those are every.
That's what I, I just.
No, no, hold on a second. I, because I, I had some conversation about this earlier. These are calls for dog bites, right?
Not all dog bites. Animal Control primarily handles dogs and cats.
But for animal calls?
Yes.
But do, do animal issues come up when they're not animal calls?
If it's not an animal.
No?
Possums, raccoons.
Sick animals, yeah, sure good, sick animals. But I think, I think what the attorney's asking, I'll give you one example where an animal issue can generate from a non-animal call. We, we pull over a car and end up arresting a person out of the car and the person has an animal in the car with them.
Right.
What do we do with the animal? In that case like that, we would have, we would have Animal Control and take possession of that, of that dog. So that would be a non-animal call.
Yeah, I realize, actually, Dr. Martin, as I was chatting back before the meeting, when she showed me this. And so sometimes they call Animal Services.
We've got to sell.
This is a search on animal calls where the issue is animals. They call Animal Services as a result of other things, right?
Yes, sir.
So, but we have no breakdown of what these calls really were?
No, so that, that first list that you have there, I'm not sure where that, that was generated directly from. I believe the chief, the chief generated that. The second one, the full stack that we actually got from Pasco County Communications Dispatch.
This?
The stack that just dropped.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Animal Services is.
Okay, so this is all of three, four, six, six, eight. And this is all of Ritchie?
No, no.
No.
That's the whole county.
This, these are calls that the police chief looked up just the purpose of a call and came up with those. He didn't pull all of the files. So what Officer Koch is telling you that if somebody calls, they may pull someone over for reckless driving, okay? He didn't pull reckless driving calls, but they may call Animal Services. So that's what this list is. These are, whether it's in the zip code or not, are Animal Services responses, okay? So many of these may be in addition to these in Port Ritchie. You can't make the presumption that if it's not on here, it's not in the city. No, they could have got, it could have been a reckless driving call and they found a snake and it'd be on here and it wouldn't be on here. Okay? You can't make that presumption.
Okay. How many are highlighted in here?
The ones highlighted in that, in that packet are, I believe, twenty.
No idea how many raccoons, armadillos, possums.
The Animal Control does not handle wild, general wildlife. It's primarily dogs and cats.
Who takes, who takes care of general wildlife?
Depending on what the nature is, we would contact either FWC or Wildlife Rescue Organizations.
Okay, and if I'm reading this correctly, who takes care of livestock?
I don't know. I've never had a livestock call.
Do we have livestock in the city?
We may be getting one. I, I.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
When we discussed this in the last couple of years and stuff like that, we talked about the phenomenal amount of responsibility it would have just to take in these animals and the dogs. We have no facility for that. We have no people to watch it. We have no veterinarian on call. We don't have any other way to handle these dog and cat problems.
Well, for your information, the sheriff takes care of all livestock.
Oh, well, I'm glad to hear that.
So if we have a livestock, we call the sheriff. If we have a dog, we call somebody. If we have a.
I'll hide my cow.
I, I think we're getting ripped off, but do whatever you want.
You know, this is, this has been a, a thing that council, previous councils for years have gone back and forth on. And, and it's a bitter pill to swallow. But in the end, we always realize that it is necessary. And so I will make the motion that we pay for the Animal Control Services
Second.
From Pasco County.
I'll volunteer to shoot all the rabid raccoons.
No shooting. No shooting.
I think there'd be a problem with discharge of a firearm in the city limit.
Occasionally, I just. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm going to figure it out in H. Jim. Okay, millage rate. Phyllis, remember this? Now, she, I just, you know, you remember Benson, the millage rate? It's a chapter in every book.
You're going to do, you want me to do this?
No, please, sir.
You sure?
It, it strokes killing.
I'm going.
Every year, we, we set a tentative millage rate. It's done, it's almost the exact same time every year. We go to the rollback rate, which is the assessed value of all the property in the city, okay? Assessed values go up, rollback rate goes down. It's a way to match apples and apples, okay? So if your value of property did go up a little bit, I think our rollback rate actually went up for some odd reason. And because the counties went up, ours kind of moved around in the middle, I'm not sure, but we got the figures there. So it's just about the same. Then what the state does is the state makes cities determine a maximum millage rate. Now, we're going to go into workshops and budget hearings. We have to have this done by September. There's, for the newer council members, there's be several extra meetings in August and September. But in any event, once you set the maximum millage rate, you can do any millage rate you want below that. But if you go over that, you have to do a tax increase notice, which is very expensive to do. It's, I think it's certified mail to everybody, but don't hold me to that. But it's a big expense to it. So what the state does is the state uses this formula to say, take your rollback rate, and then they take the personal income average of everybody in the state and they use a formula and that bumps it up about one mil. And then you're allowed to go one mil higher than that. So what Mr. Lupo, I'm going to pick and note Mr. Lupo here, is proposing, this is his, and we do this every year, is to set the millage rate, the maximum millage rate. We're looking for seven point seven eight three five, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, so every year, everybody talks about this. And Mr. Lupo tentatively, are you planning on going up to that rate?
No, absolutely not, sir.
There you go. So he's looking for that latitude. You never know, maybe the city will burn next week or something like this. We're just covering ourselves, but that's the outside. So that's what he's looking for to give, to give him and you the most latitude that you don't have to do a formal mailing.
That's our insurance policy.
That's our insurance policy.
Standard operating procedure.
Every year.
Every year we do this.
So please, people, this is not what we're doing. This is a procedural thing. We go through this every year and we get all kinds of calls and people get upset because the word passes that we're cranking this up to this new rate. That is not the case. This is a procedural thing that we do just for safety.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the proposed millage rate at seven point seven eight three five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Can I ask, what is the millage rate right now?
Our current millage rate is five point seven five one eight.
Five point seven.
Seven five one eight.
And where we think we will get from?
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to speculate. But our.
Is there a floor?
Last year, last year, no, there's no formula. Last year, sir.
Can we go down to two?
It depends on what services you would like to cut and how many employees you would like to leave out of the system. It, it was my, what we accomplished last year was to reduce the overall millage rate. We dropped it from the previous rate. I'm, I'm hoping to keep the exact same millages this year or lower it. It may raise a little bit. We're just beginning the, the process now. We've met with many of our different departments, but we've just now received the numbers from the county that, that, that's part of our budget process. We will be coming to you very shortly in, in budget meetings where you'll sit down and we'll go through each and every budget and we'll come up with some basic numbers. I intend to present the city council with the option to, to reduce dependency on CRA funding, to bring forward a millage, if not lower, very close to the existing one or slightly above it, depending upon what council decides to approve. So will we ever get, God forbid we would ever get near that number. It will never happen. But we'll become, I'm hoping to come in very close or below the existing millage rate.
What's the millage rate for Newport Ritchie?
Almost nine points. The, the state law cap is ten. They're pretty, pretty close to their, their cap of ten. It's nine and change. I believe it's nine and change.
So we're considerably better off.
We're killing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Anyone in the public? Let's, any discussion, I'm not going to vote for anything much more than what we have. And I hope the public understands that.
You did it last year.
Same place. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then. I remember about twenty years ago, the then mayor said, we got to give some wiggle rate. And I said, well, if we do, he'll wiggle into it.
You got that right, and I did.
Okay. You think we need no business?
Yeah.
Okay, do it.
Okay, we had started something a couple of months ago on having the police staffs and the number of calls and everything. We had done that for a couple of months. Can we continue that next month for the month of June and July?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Matter of fact, I have the June stats on and they're in my computer. If I can bring June's and.
We'd like to, you know, we'd like to let the public know exactly what you guys are doing.
Counsel.
And.
Yes, ma'am, not a problem.
I'm sorry. Counselor, that, that was my, my fault. I requested that staff didn't, not to present reports because I assumed that this would take a much longer time with respect to some of the issues on this. But we'll bring it back to you at the very next council meeting.
Okay, it would be nice also to represent the fire department and the utility people so that people know what everybody's doing.
Yes, certainly. We'll, we'll be back.
I know you can't talk real well. And I hate to ask, but what's their dredging status right now? Are we still in the process of trying to take care of one in eighteen? Isn't that what we're supposed to try to do?
We're currently getting ready to set up a meeting with our engineering staff.
What, we, excuse me, I have just recently authorized the reimbursement, reimbursement for our engineering staff of, you knocked that in.
Whatever.
Their name. Duberry. We're moving forward with the requirements of DEP. Once they're, they have completed that, we'll begin dredging again.
Okay. And the hike and bike trail, we're still talking to the county and still working on that? How are we doing?
We had a discussion with the county where the county wanted to assess us a certain amount of money for work that we had already done. So we've stopped at that point in time. But we are still engaged in going under the bridge and extending the bike and hike trail.
Bill, have you had any, Bill, have you had any current negotiations, talks with county or Newport Ritchie?
No, nothing, nothing recently.
Nothing new? Okay.
No, we've been working on, on the beautification of nineteen, the islands.
The, Mr. Susan would like to take the hiking bike trail west on, what is that street, Trent?
Treadway.
Treadway. Treadway. And as, I told him we maybe should get together. I believe he would have to donate some land outside his fence to that. I don't know how it'd work, but he's very willing to work with us. So if you want to make a meeting, I'll be there or if you don't want.
Okay, and the last item that I had was the grants that we are planning on helping these people with their maintenance problems and stuff.
Yes.
Is that coming together?
Absolutely. In fact, we just almost completed the final brochure that explains the grant and has all of the, the application information in it. So it'll be coming out shortly after your second reading of the minimum housing. It'll, it'll be administered through minimum housing, through the code, through the same people who will come and knock, say, you've got a problem here. Here's how we can help you fix that problem. So that, that program that you outlined, fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five percent of that grant above, twenty-five percent below. It's in process. It will come to you within one or two meetings.
And the above was matching funds and the below was not?
Correct.
Okay, is the.
A maximum of one thousand dollars.
Yes.
And is, is there always the possibility in our budget that we may be able to add to that fifty thousand dollars in the future?
That is entirely up to the discretion of council, of the CRA group.
Okay, and did you mention the gator in Green Street Canal? I'll, I'll do it for you. Apparently there is an alligator in Green Street Canal. And it's supposed to be fairly good-sized. And it's been seen by a lot of people. We do not call the police for that. We call the wildlife.
We, we called, we called a, a licensed alligator trapper, Mr. Rick Vetters. And his phone number is seven two seven two three seven zero seven three nine, courtesy of Ms. Poldy. We have several. We have several resident alligators in our community. One of them happens to live at the bottom of Ritchie Drive. You may see him, he's a little short little guy. But with respect to any of these other gators that are absolute nuisance gators, you please take a picture and call this gentleman. And with that picture, he'll come down and try and assess the danger and capture the animal and relocate it.
Well, they need to be aware of it because our little dogs might be in danger.
Animal.
And cats might be missing.
It's more than just dogs. Dogs are an absolute attractant for alligators. I'm not going to get into the old-time trapping techniques, but dogs, small children, any animal, a gator is an animal, it's hungry. So please be cautious. If you see an animal, make sure that you protect yourself and call the Fish and Wildlife number that we just gave you and they'll take care of it.
They say if you take a picture of it, too, it'll help them decide whether or not we've got a problem or whether they need to be on it a little faster. So if you have your phone with you when you see him, take a picture.
They must have a most wanted poster for those.
That's right.
Civilization.
Yeah, we'll notice, we'll notice this on our-
On the website?
Yeah, our website and our media.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Well, let me just ask one last question. If he's coming at you, this alligator, at what point do you have to decide whether to call wildlife or jump rod?
Well, if you run, I hear they can overtake you, so you may not get the chance.
Alligator up on four legs can hit as much as thirty miles an hour.
They're dangerous, very dangerous.
All right, we got it.
Can we adjourn this meeting first?
Re-cess.
That's the terrible thing.